Mr. Thompson.
I am present.
Mr. Baum. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Brown.
Present.
Dr. Fellow.
Present.
Dr. Mann.
Present.
Mr. Peck.
We have a closed session item that we're going to move into to address two topics. Government Code Section 54957.6, Labor Negotiations, PCCFA, CSEA 777, ISSU, POA. Negotiator is Mr. Ingeldinger. And Government Code Section 54957.6, Negotiation with Unrepresented Employees Confidential Management Association. Again, Mr. Ingeldinger is our negotiator. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board on the closed agenda items? None appearing. We will now adjourn into closed session and be back in open session at 7:00 this evening. I'd like to call back to order the meeting of the Pasadena City College Board of Trustees of September 1st, 2010. We have been in a closed session and there is no reportable action from that closed session. So, we are now at the point of the roll call. Mrs. Thompson. That's right, you did indeed. So, we don't have to go back and redo that then. So, we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance and I will ask Dr. Sugamoto to lead us in that, please.
Thank you, President Thompson. If you would, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? And I would note to the Brown Act precludes the board from discussing or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. We may make a brief comment or ask questions, but that's the extent of our ability to participate. So, anybody want to address us on non-agenda items? Okay, moving on. Let's now move next to reports from the Board of Trustees. Any reports, Mr. Baum?
It's been so long since we last met, I don't know what to say. No report.
Okay. Mr. Martin?
No report.
Dr. Mann?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Brown?
Just one thing. I had the opportunity to attend Welcome Students Welcome at your Pasadena, and it was quite a good event. It was exciting to see all the students all energized going from one table to another as they were provided the resources as to how to navigate through the system to give them a good day. I myself received quite a few valuable information which in one, like in five minutes, I received so much information that took me about six months to get. So, it was a very good event and the staff was just as energetic and enthusiasm as the students. So, I applaud you for the good work.
Good. Thank you. Dr. Fellow?
It's been a very challenging week as classes began at the state universities. Most state universities closed all classes two days ago, which means students cannot enroll unless they're going to graduate in January. It's very sad. The chancellor said there's no state budget. There is just no money to continue operating. And students, the vice president said that students will not be graduating unless they go to summer school now. There is just, and it's very difficult to explain this to students, that you cannot operate without a budget. So, I feel bad, but I have to obey my boss.
Mr. Peck?
I will say also, yes, it has indeed been a challenging week also here at PCC for adding every single class that I've had so far. I've had an immense number of people trying to add. So, I know that the efforts of Dr. Rocha and Dr. Jacobs and her team to expand class sizes were definitely helpful and we're thankful for what we were able to accomplish with that. I do want to report on the iPass, for those of you that are familiar with it. It's our amazing subsidized student transit program. And as a public transit user, I'm very excited about it, but also particularly excited because I'll point out that in three days, we sold more iPasses than we did cumulatively the entire last semester. So, the program is being very well received. It's starting to take off. And so, last semester was sort of our test run, but it's really something that students are loving. We have students that are asking for it all the time. Everybody that we introduce it to seems interested. So, it's great and we're excited about that. And then, I'll defer to Jamie for everything else about Welcome Week.
Okay. The iPass is a topic on the consent agenda this evening. There may be some questions about it at that time. So, let's move now to the superintendent president reports and then we'll go to shared governance representatives.
Yes. Thank you, President Thompson. I just have one first brief item, which is a note of gratitude. I wanted to thank all of the faculty and staff and administration for successfully opening the 2010-2011 academic year. We're off and running and it was just a great, a great week for us. And the second item is an introduction of a new appointment. And I'll ask Vice President Jacobs to introduce our new acting dean of business.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I am delighted to introduce to you our, I would say, professor and attorney Gary Woods. He will be the acting dean of the Business and Computer Technology Division. And the appointment is for the fall semester or until the position is filled. And he has accepted and we are delighted. So, would you just like to say hello or something?
I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to be able to represent Pasadena City College in a different capacity. You know, I've been here for forever. You know, when I was a child, I used to play in the mirror pools out here. And I, when I was in high school, I was in the last graduating class when the high school was on the campus here. And I graduated when, the first year, when I went up to Siramadre. And the tennis courts out here, the old ones, I was on the CIF tennis team that won the CIF championship for Pasadena High School. But, so this has been sort of my family and I came back later and I've taught 34 years. And they can't seem to get rid of me. It's like a little cockroach. I will do the very best I can to represent this college and hopefully the business department, as I told Dr. Rocha, you know, perhaps it'll be a little bit like SC where, you know, you're noted statewide sports-wise and you're good academically, but we want to be the best. And so, that hopefully will be my objective. And hopefully by the end, you'll be proud that you hired me. I appreciate all the time. And I left, you know, at Ortel. I left them at a restaurant.
Yeah, I know.
So, I told them I'd be back in a little while and I just appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. Glad to have you onboard.
Thank you.
David, I'll see you in the gym.
Shared governance representatives.
Well, before he sneaks out, we'd like to welcome Gary to the Management Association. And we're glad to have him. And like you said, he's part of the unofficial morning workout group. Usually, you see each other in the gym early in the morning. I'd just like to report that the Management Association, we're having our first meeting, our fall meeting, September 20th at noon for the full group. And then shortly after that, the executive board is going to be meeting with Dr. Rocha for the first time. We're excited about that. And we'd also like to point out that we are now, have a webpage that's linked to the Staff Services page of the Pasadena City College homepage. And so, we are now up and running online. You can actually find us now. And so, we hope to be able to post information about the Management Association on the webpage.
Wonderful. Mr. Martinez?
Just the Academic Senate will meet for the first time on Monday, September 13th. And that's it for today.
Ms. Smith?
Classified Senate met today and in regards to accreditation response number five, all points on Classified Senate self-evaluation were unanimously approved and will be submitted to the district. Great.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes, well, we are currently in our week of welcome. And so, first, we'd like to thank all of those of you who have come by and said hi to our students. We're having a really great turnout so far. We've begun the application process to start forming our committees. And so, I just think that the way things have been, although, although students have been having trouble with adding their classes, at least when they come outside to the quad, I think that they're having a pretty good time with the free food and the festivities that we've been offering. And, yeah. Oh, and in addition to that, so all of you know, the AS Board will be battling our improv troupe club on campus and that's going to be in the Voslo Forum on Friday and you are all invited to come as well. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Approval of consent items is next on the agenda. Are there specific items to be addressed separately? Mr. Baum?
Forty B, thirty P, and thirty-four P. Oh, not, we don't need to do thirty-four P because we just did it. So, forty B and thirty P.
Forty B and thirty P?
Correct.
Any other items to be addressed separately? Okay. Can we at least get a motion to approve the other consent items?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the other consent items? Advisory vote?
Are we going to have discussion?
I said on other items. This is, the motion does not include forty B or thirty P. Consent, or excuse me, advisory vote?
With those two consent items excluded, the advisory vote is aye.
Okay. Other, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Now, let's address forty B as a separate item.
I wanted to raise this for discussion and get a little bit of background and, from the administration, a couple of questions I have, and I want the students to weigh in. The process that came to this, so it's at a ratification as opposed to approving in advance, and the nature of what the cost more specifically will be to the district to enter into this agreement. So, I'm asking for the administration to say, first off, this is coming in as a ratification and so, and it's a significant expenditure. So, I just wanted some background on the timeline, that how this came as a ratification as opposed to discussion in advance, and then to get more detail on the cost to the district.
Right. Thank you, trustee Baum. In turning it over to Vice President Van Pelt, you know, I did have the vice president write a backgrounder there. And so, Vice President Van Pelt, would you please respond?
Okay. The first issue regards timing. And what we did this time is we've expanded the program from Metropolitan Transportation Authority to also include Foothill because, of course, we have Foothill Transit on the campus. It required Foothill Transit's Board to approve negotiations with PCC. That did not occur until very, very late in July, at which point we began the process of discussions with Foothill and then came to an agreement with Foothill. It also required that MTA does the printing of the actual passes and they require two weeks lead time prior to issuing them. And it required having the Foothill logo on the MTA pass, so it has both logos. So, by the time that the, we entered into the agreement with Foothill, the agenda had already been set for the last board meeting. But we had to start selling these or we would have lost the momentum and therefore it turned into ratification.
And then, what will be the financial impact to the district?
The maximum financial impact, because as Nolan Peck mentioned, we've now sold 1,272, so that translates to $37,000. So, the initial impact is about $130,000 less the $37,000. So, we're into about $91,000, $92,000, $93,000 maximum impact at this point, 50% of which comes from the student activity fee. The balance, the other 50% comes from the student parking, the parking fund. So, it does not come out of the unrestricted general fund.
And then, I want to express some concerns to the students in the audience because this, we approved this last fall and, I mean, last spring at the request of the associated students. And my assessment, or from what I understand, we kind of took a bath on the project to the, I don't know what the impact was ultimately, but it seemed to be about at least $50,000 and could be up about $100,000 that we took district revenue. And even though it comes from parking, that displaces funds for improved campus security and other things that we could be using those funds for to improve lighting or security in our, for our students in the parking lots and things like that. Now, is that money that we have from parking being taken away from any other activities that, you know? So, if we're going to spend $45,000 here, does that remove funds from another purpose that we might otherwise be able to devote to other campus improvements?
Well, of course, the parking fund is specifically restricted to both parking lots and mass transit. So, it's by code usable for both. We can do parking lot repairs and so forth, but we've done most of that. We are in the process now of improving parking lot security through cameras. That's already been, funds have been set aside for that. The reality is that it really does help our parking situation in terms of sustainability by having more people taking mass transit. So, it benefits the students and it benefits the district.
And so, what are the students going to do to make sure that the, there's the maximum amount of passes are sold? I mean, Nolan shared improved numbers this year. What are we going to do to try to get to that magical 2,000-plus number?
Well, I, now that we're at, you know, 1,200 within the first three days, I don't think 2,000 is very far off. We've increased a ton in terms of visibility from the first time we did the program. As some of us may recall, when we passed the program the first time, by the time it got started, we were well into the spring semester. And so, we had really lost a lot of the opportunity for students to access that pass. Many of them probably felt, oh, I've missed X number of weeks already. What's the point now? So, I think we've already seen what kind of impact it has when students can buy it within the first couple of days. It's wonderful. And then, now that we've sort of got this down to, I don't want to say down to a science, we're still getting the hang of it. But at some point, and I've spoken with Dr. Van Pelt about this, we'd like to integrate this with online registration so that every single student that registers at PCC has an opportunity to purchase the iPass as they're registering for classes, you know, hopefully in its own window somehow, so that students can read a little bit about it as they're going through the registration process. And I think that even if students don't buy it at that moment, they'll at least be cognizant of it and they'll purchase it later. So, that's one thing. And I know that the number is really big. I would also like to point out too, that other colleges do the iPass and the Los Angeles City College District's iPass seemed magical to me. How do they provide it for so cheap for all nine colleges? And as I dug a little bit deeper to understand why they were able to do that, their iPass is funded through a bond or a grant of some kind that's going to expire next year. So, they don't know where that money's going to come from anymore, which is awful for their students who've come to depend on this pass. And so, I think we're in a uniquely fortunate situation that we've developed a sustainable funding source for our iPass that students can, you know, come to rely on as opposed to something that just might be pulled out from under their feet one day. It really, I think it has potential to be a cornerstone service that PCC offers to students.
One thing I'm also hoping is acknowledged at some point by the associate students is the fact that the trustees did actually set aside these resources because what happened last spring, which was a little personally frustrating to me, was that we devoted almost $100,000 toward this program and then students, and at the request of the students, and I praise the student leadership for doing it, then the students would then question, we don't have money for this or that and other expenditures and why did you make those decisions? And this is a cognizant decision by the trustees and the administration toward supporting sustainability efforts on the district. And I hope that that is acknowledged. One last question that I have is, which will lead into, you're taking this funding out of the student activities fee that we also approved to empower the students to take initiatives like this. How did you decide that, to make this allocation? Do you have a public process where students can actually participate and be aware of how these funds are being spent? And did you, and what kind of reaction are you getting?
Well, the funds are being spent in the, in an open Student Services Fund meeting. And so, the students do have the ability to come and speak on those, on those issues. But also, just in sitting at the tables during Welcome Week, I, it's not an exaggeration to say that every other student just about that has come up to our table has requested where to buy a Metro iPass or asking more information about it. And we have dissuaded students from purchasing a parking pass to buying the Metro iPass. And so, we've seen this, this iPass just explode comparing to last semester. And so, we're very, very confident about this, this iPass and what it's going to do. And so, we, I would say that it's arguably the most sought-after service that we have on campus right now and it's only bound to get better.
I just am pleased to see, but I hope, I hope that we also have a chance to review the use of the student activity fee in a, in a public way so that everybody, there's a transparency about how the decisions for allocations are made by that fee. And I don't disagree that this is a good purpose for it, but I want to make sure it's public and transparent.
Mr. Martin?
This is a retroactive item. So, this discussion that we're having is a little bit conceptual. It seems to me that the whole parking fund, as an iPass as a part of that, should come back as a future agenda item some later time after we've had a comprehensive assessment where we can get a report that explains how much was spent. Another alternative with parking money is to lower the parking costs to the students. If we actually have extra parking funds, we could lower the price of either the day pass or the, or the semester pass. And in that context, it might be worth it to students to pay a few dollars more to subsidize the iPass so that those that do buy the parking permit can find a parking place. So, that's a difficult decision to make on concept. I think we need to make it on details. I think we need to see a full report after it's not just gone through this experimental phase, but the whole semester, and see how all this is chunking out and where we can save students perhaps on parking or at least improving parking.
Dr. Mann?
Yes, I also have a comment which is based on process, not necessarily on concept. It was my understanding that this was a pilot and we were going to have a report on how it went. And I know we had a transition in leadership during the summer and I assume this is one of the things that probably didn't get done. But I was expecting to hear, you know, in more detail, or, well, actually, there would be a, an analysis of this since it was, that's what usually happens when you have a pilot, not that it would be continued and expanded. Also, I am a little concerned that we are, you know, we are ratifying this. I do understand that there had, tickets had to be printed or so on, but I think everyone knows what the first day when the classes begin, that's approved, what, two years in advance? And I think it's really important that, that we try to bring these to the board. This is an awful lot of money to ratify. And it's not that I don't support the use of it and I understand, I understand the funding. But I don't think, I recall ratifying, what is it, $100,000? It's over $100,000. And I think if we had had the, the report on the pilot program, we might have been able to get ahead of this. I understand there's difficulties in negotiations, but there, I just feel that the board was kind of left out of the loop on this.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Peck?
I will say also, the process on this has, has been unfortunate in the sense that we're still getting the hang of it, really. This is a new program for PCC. And so, we know that, and Michael Lance, who championed this project last semester, has been in the process of handing it off to Matilda, who's in the audience, and then myself. And so, we've been working with him and again, it is, it's still very much a growing project at PCC. And so, if this is something that we want to discuss, as trustee Martin suggested, where, you know, how we can reallocate money from the parking fund and so on, I would just request that, if I may, as it relates to the iPass, that we try to do it relatively early because one of the problems that we ran to, ran into, as I said before, is the later we go, the less likely it is that we'll be able to promote it early. And as we've seen, the earlier we promote it, the more successful it is.
If we are going to bring this back for a board discussion, Dr. Rocha, when would you recommend the appropriate time to do that? October, November?
October would be fine. I think, you know, the thing here is we need to do some work. I obviously will be happy to bring back a full report on the previous, on the assessment of the previous project. It's important for us to make that report so that we can get the guidance of the board as to whether this is a budget item or whether this is a sustainability, sustainability item, okay? And what is driving the decision here? So, we will, I will make the assessment. I do apologize for not picking it up and, and bringing the assessment forward. But yes, President Thompson, I think by the second meeting in October, we can bring back that report and then get clear guidance for next year's negotiation.
Are there other questions, Mr. Martin?
I do, I'm unclear when the existing, this ratification, what time period is this for? Is this for a year or is this just for fall?
Fall semester.
This is just for fall?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the ratification, to ratify this? And I think at least implicit, if not explicit in that would be that there, this will be a future agenda item, the second meeting in October to enable us to do an analysis and evaluation of the program. Still moved?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I should give Mr. Peck credit for the motion.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay. It's moved and seconded. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thirty P was the other report, I believe.
Yeah, I just had a question about the stipends for academic personnel. And I saw a stipend for a, a division dean, an acting division dean for four days. And I just, it's more of a process issue. Do we not have backups for our deans that we could call upon so that we don't have to contract out for additional stipend costs? My understanding, my hope was that there might be somebody that could fill in for four days until the leadership is established. So, I wanted to clarify that.
Vice President Jacobs?
Okay. No, we do not have anyone to stand in. Now, when deans are on vacation, another dean will act in the dean's place for various things. But for the types of things that we need to have happen at the beginning of a semester, we don't have any assistant deans. We only have coordinators that are release time for faculty. But at the beginning of the semester, we, they are not on board. They come on board with the beginning because we don't have them in the, the intercessions at all. So, we wanted to have assistant deans or someone who could do that type thing. But other than, the next person would be the clerical, the secretary too. But no, other than that.
Because that was news today. I was hoping to see that there was sufficient backup in place for the deans, but maybe the Management Association could advocate for the, for additional layers of support because I know how hard the deans all work and so.
Move approval of thirty P. There a second? There a second to approve thirty P?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I believe that takes care of the consent items. The next item is selection of trustee, Area 5, discussion of possible action. I will report that the ad hoc advisory board member vacancy committee, I think is what we're calling it, consisting of trustee Belinda Brown, trustee Dr. Janet Mann, and myself, met this afternoon and considered the 10 applications that we have received. I think we would certainly say that the applications we received were from people who are quite well-qualified to serve in the position. We had, staff had checked. to serve in the position. We had staff had checked and make certain that each person who applied actually lives in Area 5 and is registered to vote there, and all of the procedural prerequisites are met. So having said that, the recommendation of the subcommittee is that after reviewing the 10 applications, we are recommending that we bring forward to the six board members, trustees, and the advisory trustee, the following five people to interview at a public meeting. And we are recommending that of the 10 people that, I'm just going through this in alphabetical order, that we interview Benjamin Figueroa, Melinda Shaw, Adam Murray, Linda Wa, and Warren Weaver. And we are also recommending that we do this at a special public board meeting to be held on September 14th, a time and place to be determined. The hope being, and the thought being, that if we meet on the 14th, which is a Tuesday evening, we will be able to have the interviews and would then have a period of time to consider this, and then it would be on the agenda for the following night, the 15th, for action, discussion with possible action by the board, so.
Could you repeat the five names again, please?
Yes. Benjamin Figueroa, excuse me, Melinda Shaw, S-H-S-I-A, she pronounces it Shaw, Adam Murray, Linda Wa, and Warren Weaver. And we can have, I mean, I don't know whether Dr. Mann or Ms. Brown would like to add something to that, but. Oh, I'm sorry, Nolan, yeah. Thank you, Janet, for correcting me. Nolan Pack was also there. I apologize. Our student trustee and contributed quite significantly and very positively to the discussion, so I appreciate that.
Would you have anything to add?
Do Belinda or Janet have anything to add to it? Janet?
The only thing that I would add was, I think that I was very favorably impressed with the quality of all 10 applicants. And we had a really nice kind of choice when you're trying to choose the best out of a good group rather than trying to find, you know, good people. So I would like to thank all the people who applied and put together the application and responded, and I think all of them were all well-qualified, and we probably would not have gone wrong if we had have picked anyone. I think, I agree that we did pick the five that we thought would best serve the college and best fit the criteria as advertised, but we got a tremendous outpouring from the community, and I think we should thank everyone who sent their name forward.
Belinda, anything to add?
No, actually, Janet said it very well. We had quite a few excellent candidates, and it was actually difficult to go through them because they were all good. But again, we only could take a few, so I appreciate each applicant, and we will move forward.
Nolan, anything to add?
I'll just say, I'm very impressed with the way that these candidates look on paper, and I cannot wait for the special meeting when we actually get to speak with them and ask them questions. That's going to be very exciting.
Any questions by other members of the board of trustees? Let me ask the question. Are you all available on Tuesday evening, the 14th of September, to have a meeting? I don't hear anybody saying no, so.
Wait, wait, wait. Give us a chance to check.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes?
While they're checking, I would like also say that I think Mrs. Thompson did an excellent job of receiving this, and she was very helpful to us during the interview, had a tremendous amount of information on everyone. Everything was very, everything was well-organized, and it made our work much easier.
Amen. She certainly did. It was very helpful.
What time of day are we looking at for the meeting?
My thought would be another evening meeting, maybe 6 o'clock, 6:30, something like that. I anticipate this is going to take at least two hours and perhaps as long as three, but certainly with five people and questions, and we will decide how long to give each person. But I think you have to expect we're going to be at least a couple of hours. Any objection to meeting at, say, 6 o'clock? Okay, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the ad hoc Board Member Vacancy Committee that we will interview on September the 14th, beginning at 6 o'clock?
Still moved?
Second.
Okay, Benjamin Figueroa, Melinda Shaw, Adam Murray, Linda Wa, and Warren Weaver. Okay, been moved in a second. Any discussion? Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I just want to say further, I could echo the comments that it was great to see the caliber of individuals that put themselves forward and a real testament to the commitment of the community to the district. And also, I wouldn't want to face any of those candidates in a regular election for a board member because they certainly would be, have formidable credentials, so I was very pleased to see that.
No, they all were. We had 10 applications, I said, and all were very, very well-qualified, competent individuals, just bringing different backgrounds and perspectives, and so we will see where we go from here. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the 2010-2011 initial bargaining proposal from the Pasadena Area College District, the Pasadena City College Faculty Association. Dr. Rocha, do you have anything to say before we open the public hearing?
No, we presented the proposal, and it's been out since the last meeting, and tonight is the hearing. We welcome comments of any kind as we head to our first meeting with the Faculty Association.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board with respect to this item?
Motion to close public hearing.
Okay. I will exercise my tremendous authority here and say the public hearing is closed. And that is, I think, as far as we need to go with this item this evening. The next item on the agenda, moving right along here, is future board meeting dates.
Move we set a board meeting date for Wednesday, September 14th?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, September 14th?
We've already done that. That was a part of the motion that was passed. I think we're all set with that. September 15th and October 6th, okay? Future agenda items?
Wait, I do have something on this October 6th meeting. It's, and I'm not sure here, at the retreat, we discussed having one board meeting a month or every so often as a study session. Was October 6th a regular meeting, or was that going to be a study session, Dr. Rocha? I don't recall.
It's a regular meeting, I believe.
Well, I think I'm still want to consult with President Thompson, but my sense is that the recommendation would be that the 6th would be a regular meeting, that the first meeting of the month would be a regular meeting, and that the following meeting, whenever we schedule it, would be the study session meeting.
Thank you.
We might just elaborate on that for the benefit of people who were not at the retreat, and you might take a moment to explain that we did have a thoughtful discussion, and the belief is that we need to have more opportunities just to, whether it be a study session or whatever you wish to call it, where we can talk about things that are important to the college without having to be faced with time constraints and decision-making and that sort of thing. So that was the thought behind having what we call a study session, the second meeting of each month. Okay? Future agenda items?
Yes, I have a comment or question, maybe clarification for that matter. Contract Ed, I had requested to put that on the agenda. I see here, September 10, is that what I'm understanding, that it will be on the agenda for September? Or am I misreading this?
Sorry, let us, what was the item that you mentioned again, please?
Contract education. I requested it in March. I see here, September 2010, is that when we're going to hear, or is this just a, I'm not sure what that is. Dr. Rocha?
I'm sorry, trustee Brown, I just cut out to the paper. Again, which was the item, trustee Brown?
Contract education.
Contract education, I think.
It's on the second, it's on the back.
Yeah, on the back.
At the bottom.
Yeah, there it is.
Board.
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Well, two things I'd say, trustee Brown. I appreciate you raising that to my attention. First, September has just begun, so we have some time to bring that to a formal meeting. This is part and parcel of the Ed Master Plan, which we spoke of, contract education, the plan for it will fit into the larger educational master plan. And so I think at the next meeting on the 15th, I'm certainly open to agendizing a report and discussion, if you're open to that, or perhaps at the October 6th meeting.
Okay, anyone will do.
Mr. Martin?
Well, the way this process is supposed to work, the fact that it's on the back page under first discussion without staff time means that it's just up to the board president for these items to put them on the agenda. The administration's not supposed to have to prepare anything, and the trustee, it gives the trustee an opportunity to better define their interests, concerns, and thoughts, to which we, as a board, then decide should staff time be allocated and resources spent to accomplish that goal. So all these items on the back page, I think, Mr. President, you just need to work through an agenda. Had we known that tonight's agenda would have been as it is, as succinct as it is, this would have been a wonderful meeting to pick up some of these, just so trustees could explain what they're doing and give you a little better direction for staff time for the future. So I think that's the concept, the way this document is supposed to work. So it's just trying to give her some time to express it. You're not supposed to have to worry until the next time, when it comes back.
I can worry if I want to.
You can worry. You can worry ahead. That's okay. It's okay to worry ahead. But you're not supposed to have to worry till you get better definition from the whole board as to where the resources are supposed to go.
Will not prevent Dr. Rocha from worrying. Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would like to, you know, point out, when Ms. Brown raised this about the contract education, you know, I think it's really important that we understand what, you know, the difference in the front and the back. Also, I noticed there's 12 items here that are identified for coming before the board on September, in September. And since we've already had our first meeting in September, I doubt if we're going to take up 12 at the second meeting. And the other thing I might suggest is, some of these have been on here for a long time. Maybe the trustees who requested these might want to look at them and see if they're still pertinent, or maybe we've already addressed this and we can take this off. Otherwise, it becomes like a burden on the board president. At least, I felt it that way, looking at all of these and knowing that my colleagues had wanted something discussed and been waiting a year, and we still haven't got around to it.
Mine was discussed Saturday, so you can remove that one.
He's absolutely right. That can be removed.
Right. And Dr. Mann stole my thought. I'd like to take two of them off the list. On the front page, the CTE update inclusive of EMP, Dr. Rocha's and the administration are actively engaged in updating the EMP, so that could be removed. That doesn't need to be on the board agenda. And the method by which enrollment numbers are computed and reported to the state, that was already dealt with at a previous board meeting, so that could be removed from that list.
Other items, future agenda items?
I'd be happy to remove mine on delegation of authority on purchase orders because, as we discussed at our board retreat, the superintendent is working on some triaging of what should fall where, and that is obviously part and parcel of that. So you could take it off this list, and it'll come back with his full report.
Her board retreat.
Anything else?
And I think the quarterly study sessions, which, or Dr. Bradbury Wong, that has been addressed at the retreat. We discussed study sessions, so that could be taken off. And I wonder, the other two items, board expenditures and more transparency on the president's expenditures, which Dr. Bradbury Wong had requested back in October of 2009, which is almost a year ago, and she's no longer on the board, and we have never said why we want to talk it and so on. But we do have, under my agenda, item disclosure of compensation for board and executive team, so maybe that, you know, maybe that covers those. Looks like there's a redundancy there.
Well, may I make a suggestion here that why don't you let Dr. Rocha and myself review this and then come back with recommended items to take off this based upon our retreat discussion and what we've heard this evening and other things like that?
I think that's, I think that's really good.
Delightful to get, delighted to get any input from all of you. And one thing I wanted to, I do have on here the having meetings in the district other than where we are right now, and I don't think it's practical. I think we're going to take that up on our next September meeting, but I think at perhaps the first study session, that would be a good topic to address because I think it's important that we get out to other parts of the district as soon as we can, so. Anything else for a future agenda item, something that's not on here? Okay, before we bring this to an almost unheard-of, timely close, anything, Ms. Chapman, have we, anything?
Thank you, no.
Mr. Ringledinger?
No.
Dr. Sigamotto?
Thank you, but no thanks.
Okay. Dr. Wilcox?
No.
Dr. Jacobs?
No.
Dr. Van Pelt?
The one thing I would say is that we did open the West Gateway on Monday, and it's serving its purpose very nicely.
Yeah, that is very nice, and we certainly owe you a great deal of appreciation for the good work of getting that done in fairly rapid times, so that is going to work very nicely. Anybody else? Mr. Miller? Cole Cross?
We're good.
Good. Anybody else? Gosh, I can't believe this. We are adjourned.